Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You all set, Mike?
I gotta find my cursor. I have no idea where it is.
Recording in progress.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is the approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any questions, comments, concerns on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed. Agenda is approved.
Sorry, guys.
Approval of the minutes?
So moved. Pass it.
We don't have the minutes, so I guess we will have to postpone that to the next meeting. Citizens' comments and/or concerns, items not on the agenda.
Are we gonna approve July 12th minutes?
Don't have them.
You don't have those either?
I have them. They're somewhere in this pile of stuff.
No, I didn't.
One's the sewer and one is the regular stuff.
The sewer we can't technically do.
No.
I didn't have anything.
You have July 12th.
Did you have anything?
No, I didn't have them. That's why.
None in my packet.
Where Bobby got them from. In my packet.
Yeah, I did too.
You guys are lucky. It's your fortune to have them.
What we do need to do is I would suggest that they get reviewed before we review them because I think that page three should be on page two and vice versa. On the July 12th meetings, minutes. Did you? Oh, you didn't get a look at these though, Joe? No, I didn't get any. Because we went from manager's report to purchase orders for approval and then back to select board comments. Maybe it's in the right order. We normally do select board comments.
The end.
No, we do that after warrant, so maybe I'm wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, see, I don't have them. Delay my last.
So what's your pleasure?
A good Navy jargon.
Next meeting.
Pardon?
Next meeting.
Next meeting? Is that agreeable?
That's fine.
That's it.
Yes, sir.
Citizens' concerns or comments, items not on the agenda. Do we have any citizens who'd like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned that no one zoomed in because I know there was supposed to be people in here. And I made sure I was on the right one, the only one.
Want to wait a minute or so or?
Well, this is, I'll show you. This is what, that's the meeting we're in today, 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM. And nobody's come into this meeting.
Is Devin Neary planning on zooming in, Mike? Is that the plan?
Yeah, Devin Neary was supposed to, or he was supposed to be here, but the other ones are supposed to zoom in, the engineers and stuff.
Okay. Other than that? We don't have any?
I know that, I know that a lady I know that lives in my house was gonna zoom in to ask the board about Castleton Days again. Nobody zoomed in, so.
Okay.
Well, we're not that much ahead of schedule, just about two minutes, so.
No.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that if somebody zooms in in the next few minutes, that we could. We could go back to it.
We can back to it, sure.
I'm gonna go grab my phone because he's trying to call my cellphone to let me know.
You know anybody that's calling, Mike?
Devin Neary.
Oh, Devin Neary, okay.
I mean, he's trying to call me to say, hey, I can't get in the meeting or something like that.
So that'll give somebody the opportunities if they wish to zoom in?
I don't know where Tim is. He's supposed to be down here tonight.
He's gonna zoom in.
Or he was?
Yep. So he told me at 5:00 tonight.
He's another one that was supposed to be zooming in, so. Maybe if something's wrong with that, he would have thought, especially Tim, that he would have been done. Well, if it's not on the agenda till 7:15 or 7:25, it's possible there is not.
They're just trusting our numbers.
We tend to get ahead of schedule sometimes and then get bogged down on something and wind up behind schedule. Just the auction did pretty good.
Did it?
Yeah, we were busy for a little while.
Were. When you, when you were moving the trailers?
I think they're already done. I think they're doing it right now as we speak.
Right now?
No.
They weren't today?
I went down yesterday to do it and there was a bunch of stuff in the way and I just couldn't get to it and I was the only one. And I said, how you doing it by myself? So I um.
Were you at the auction Thursday night? What'd the canoe go for? You remember?
The canoe was a sailboat.
Canoe?
I didn't see.
I don't remember. Don't remember? I remember them auctioning it off. Yeah. I don't remember.
What kind of canoe was it?
I should have paid attention. Keep waiting.
The freaking sailboat went and then the guy never paid for it or picked it up.
Oh, no. He didn't?
No.
Oh.
Still there.
He didn't pay for it.
Oh, God.
He didn't pay for it or pick it up.
650 that went for it.
Is that what that was? That was donated by Hasselrod.
Yeah. That's too bad. So what? You had your eye on the canoe?
No, I donated it.
Okay.
So I don't know what it went for.
Yeah.
No, that's a good canoe.
Yeah.
I can find out. I don't know what it did go for. We were so freaking busy at half the shit I couldn't bit on it. I'd like to, it's just too busy. The first night I did 250 pounds of potatoes and french fries. Bobby was going from french fries to bread dough. He wasn't sure which way he was going. It's a lot of french fries.
It's a lot of french fries.
You all set, Mike?
I'm calling a seller now.
Five bags.
How do yours compare to Roxy's?
Put theirs to shame.
I've had your french fries before. They're pretty good, pretty well.
I've had nothing but compliments on the fries. Roxy's, I just, I don't like the way they do it.
I don't like greasy fries.
That's the way they do it. They, they.
What kind of temperature do you use?
I cook mine at 365. So the less time in the grease.
Yeah.
And I use quarter inch instead of the, or 3/8ths instead of the steak fries. There's two sizes. There's half inch, 3/8ths, or quarter inch. I use the 3/8ths. They cook better.
Mm-hmm.
There's tricks that I do to them and they come out amazing. They really do.
It said I've had your fries.
They're not, they're not dark, they're not greasy. I use canola oil also.
Mm-hmm.
But it's expensive. It's now 50, $54 a bucket. It went from 31 to 54. But canola oil, you don't get the life out of it, but you get better quality food out of it. That's where I'm at with that. Sometime if you're home and I'm cooking them, I'll bring you a bucket of them and you can try them. And they were, everybody was raving about them. They ran out of sausage. I ended up going to my house Thursday night and getting two boxes of frozen sausage out of my refrigerator and taking it up because they had no sausage.
That's a nice problem.
What do we know, Mike?
Somebody, I don't know, I just called a seller. Five people are waiting.
Okay, good.
There you go.
They're a little tardy. Got somebody calling.
That's Devin. I just tried letting you guys in. Yeah, you're all set.
I tried to get my car, because I didn't get hold of anybody. So I'm actually driving there and I'm like, a little late, so. But if they have a chance, like, if they're all set.
Um, we're not quite to that one yet, so hopefully you'll be here. Okay, thank you. Yep, Mike.
Mike, are these folks that are associated with something on the agenda or are they somebody?
My wife is something different, but the engineers and stuff from Fitzgerald Engineering.
Okay.
Can you guys hear us? All right. Devin just called. He's still en route here, driving like a maniac. So hopefully he'll be here when you guys start, but.
Okay. We'll go back to the citizens' concerns or comments. You're up.
Who's first?
You know that person, Mike?
I do.
You do?
Does she know that we're waiting?
Jen, we're waiting for you.
Am I the only citizen?
You are, Jen.
Can I go first?
You're in.
You're in.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for having this meeting. I am here to talk to you about Castleton Day. We had our first Castleton Day, we were all in 2019 at Crystal Beach. It was a huge success. We had lots of vendors, we had live music, we had free activities. Woodards did boat rides. It was really awesome. Obviously, in 2020, we had to cancel. So we are rescheduling for this year. And we are hoping to bring it to the village this year. And the reason for that is to tie into Castleton University's Parents Weekend so that we get some folks who might not normally experience Castleton Day to experience Castleton Day. So we would, we're seeking permission to use the town green for live music and vendors, the same area that the Lions hold their auction. And John Rayland has also, is gonna let us use the Texaco Station where we hope to host a touch a truck portion of the event where we have fire trucks and police vehicles there for kids to come and see. So that is September 19th. It's a Sunday. It would start at 11:00 in the morning and go till probably 2:00. Invite local vendors to come sell their wares, sell food. Let local businesses in the village know about the event so if they want to open or stay open or run specials, they can. Just really making it another great family-friendly free event for local folks.
Okay.
So any questions for me?
Any questions for Jen? Hearing none. Is there a motion to allow folks to use the green on, for Castleton Days, September 19th?
I'll make a motion that we allow them to use the green on September 19th from 11:00 to 2:00.
I'll second it.
And a second? Any discussion? None? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You're all set, Jen?
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Hope to see you all there again.
Thank you. Remembering the victims of COVID, State House Lawn, September 19th, 2021. Is there a motion on this? I believe the motion would be to recognize it.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing, Steso Road Stormwater Scoping Study. Devin? Okay, Devin.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I am just pulling over now. I was, had the, we had the wrong link, so I was trying to drive frantically to your, to your town office to try to grab you guys, but we were able to get it from Mike, so thank you, Mike. And I am just pulling over right now. Sorry about that. Thank you, guys. So this is the Local Concerns Public Meeting for the Stormwater Scoping Study on Steso Road, primarily the Town Transfer Station. The scoping study was funded by a 2019 Transportation Alternatives Grant through the Vermont Agency of Transportation. And due to COVID and some other issues, you know, we had a bit of a lag in selecting a consultant and getting going, but through the Steering Committee, which is Mike Jones, the town manager, myself, Devin Neary, the transportation planner, plant.
He's in a bad area?
There's not many good areas between.
Where he is.
Where'd he go?
He's locked up.
He doesn't even know it, does he?
No, he don't.
He hasn't.
Self-service.
Can we talk back to him or?
He can't hear us.
Can you hear us, Devin?
Highly unlikely.
Highly unlikely, okay.
Well, Eric's on and they're, they work for both for RFP sources.
Yep. I can take over. So Devin was just going over the Steering Committee and basically, yeah, we've lost him. So just to kind of pick up where he left off, you know, this has been impacted some by COVID and the Steering Committee is taking control here and, oh, we got him back.
Pete's on too.
I apologize, guys. Where did I, where did I lose you? Steering Committee. Okay. So, long story short, the Steering Committee selected MSK Engineers and along with Fitzgerald Environmental to perform the scoping study. The consultants have prepared some, an existing conditions report for the Local Concerns meeting tonight. And really what we're just trying to do is lay out those existing conditions and hear of any potential issues, whether it be through the general public or the Select Board on that town-owned parcel on Steso Road. So with that, I'd like to hand it over if there aren't any questions to Andrew Rodriguez and the MSK team to explore those existing conditions and take us through a little presentation. Okay, great. You have sharing capabilities, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Can you guys see my screen?
Yeah, yes.
Excellent. Hi. Good evening. My name is Andrew and I'll kind of be emceeing this presentation tonight. First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Andrew Rodriguez and I'm one of the project engineers here at MSK. Also from MSK is Jason Dolmetsch, the president. Our partners Fitzgerald Environmental are also with us tonight. And those, you know, hear from them are Evan and Joe. So to start off, you know, there has been a significant amount of work already completed on the site. So first, I'm gonna have Evan go over kind of the site history and as well as explain the state's new three-acre rule and how it applies to the project. So Evan, if you wanna.
Yes, all right. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Hopefully I won't have any technical difficulties on my hand as I'm talking. All right, so I just wanted to give a brief overview of how we got to this point with some past work that the Polley Medawee Conservation District has provided and facilitated through some past grant funds. So we, and I don't think Hillary Solomon is on the call currently. I think she was potentially going to join, but.
She's on vacation.
I don't see no. I'm sorry?
She's on vacation. She won't be on.
She's on vacation. Very well. So back in 2016, we had been working, Fitzgerald Environmental had been working with Hillary on a much larger scale planning study that covered Castleton and several other towns in the Castleton River watershed. And this is called a Stormwater Master Plan. And as part of that work, Pond Brook was a focal area. And naturally, because, you know, the transfer station and town property and town roads drained to Pond Brook and that was also identified as an area of concern by the town, the transfer station became kind of a focal point. And we coordinated with the town at that point and that led to some scoping on the property and the design and installation of a dry well and a swale that Andrew and Joe will probably explain when we pull up the existing conditions plan. And all of that work was done with state funding with what we generally call clean water funds through the state DEC. And as a follow-up to that work, in, you know, 2020, as it's shown on this side, we also assisted the town with some other design work to basically look at the west side of the transfer station. And really, the purpose of, you know, I had been saying to Mike all along throughout this work and Hillary expressing this as well, that now that the town is aware of the requirement to meet the three-acre rule, which is a new state stormwater rule that basically targets sites that have three acres or more of impervious. And your property, I think you're aware, has been identified as one of those sites, given that it's never had a stormwater permit, never needed to. It was essentially grandfathered in. But as part of a larger, you know, lake cleanup plan, the so-called TMDL, there are about 1,000 sites across the state that have been identified as having three acres of impervious or more and being subject to this rule. And your property is one of them. So, you know, I'm gonna let Andrew and Jason and Mike kind of describe what the overall objectives are. But this is a key piece of this scoping study in our mind, in our mind, setting up the town to, you know, navigate whatever you plan to do on the property such that, you know, you can comply with this rule and this permit requirement in the future. So this is outside the scope, really, of this scoping study, but I just wanted to go over the steps that are needed in the three-acre rules. So first step, an engineering feasibility analysis. And while our work will not necessarily result in that, meeting that one step, it's, it will result in a bit of a roadmap toward meeting this, you know, step one and subsequent steps. So step two would be actually, once a set of stormwater practices are identified on the site that would meet those permit requirements, you know, the town would have to do some fundraising. Or if it was determined that, you know, the requirement, stormwater requirements couldn't all be met on-site, which is gonna happen in some sites, I'm not sure it will on yours, but there'll be a mitigation bank that permitees can pay into. And then step three, of course, would be the construction of those practices. And this will play out over the next, the engineering would be over the next roughly two years, I'll say. And then you'd have up to five years to do the construction of the practices. So we felt we just, so that's, that's it on the three acre. You can live life. We wanted to give you a good, you know, overview of what is required in these rules. So. Hey, Andrew.
All right, thanks, Evan. So I first would like to define the, kind of, the goals of the project and then share our approach. So first, our goal would be to evaluate the stormwater conditions on site now and then what they would be in the future. After that evaluation, we'd work with you to develop a conceptual stormwater management plan that could be used for other planning. So our approach is to work with the community to create a stormwater management plan that complies with the three-acre rule, cites a new salt and sand shed, and complies with the requirements of municipal roads and general permitting. Our approach can be broken down into individual steps for each portion of the project. For the three-acre rule, this would involve evaluating the existing conditions, soliciting public feedback on the current conditions and the desired future uses, reviewing the site for compliance, and then integrating this all into the conceptual stormwater management plan. For the salt and sand shed, again, we would evaluate the existing conditions, look for feedback on the current conditions and desired features of the sand shed, develop a conceptual plan that locates the salt and sand shed, and with all this information, bring it into the stormwater management plan. As far as the MRGP permit, we would look for feedback from the public and then integrate this into the stormwater management plan. So as we stated earlier, an important step in this process is to include the community's concerns. So first off, I wanna talk about the existing site as it is and so I can understand what the existing current site features are. To my understanding, the current uses are transfer station, town garage, salt and sand shed, and material equipment storage. So I kinda wanna bring it up to everybody. Is there any other uses that, when we did our sidewalk, that we didn't notice or didn't see that we could be missing?
Andrew, this is Mike. We talked about the other day and I sent you guys a copy of it, was that 3950 permit from MHD Solar, because they are on that three acres?
Yes.
And they've started that permit process.
Okay, they have started, okay, so the solar panels. Okay.
And also Haddock's Slate, it falls under that three acres of impervious surface and we're, they're just across the road from the transfer station.
Okay.
This is a question for the town manager. You just said Haddock's Slate. Is that a different three-acre parcel?
Correct.
That we, as a town, are not responsible for?
Correct. And I've already spoken to Jerry Haddock about it and told him I've, we've started this process and if he needs some assistance, I'll certainly point him in the right direction.
Weren't happy to be a good neighbor. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't own that one too.
Yeah. I think where this might overlap is when we get to the general roads permit where if we're gonna be doing work on either side, we don't necessarily want to put him in a bad way by planning something that would, you know, be difficult for him. Okay. So, yeah, that is a good point about the solar, the solar panels. So are they, last one we talked, they, they were going to do a separate new stormwater permit and then, so basically, once they get a permit, we can involve this in our management plan, but we would also, it would kind of be wrapped in with kind of the site's general stormwater management plan, depending on how the regulator wants to do it. So you can have, I believe they're still allowing for a site to have multiple permits on a site. So that's something, once they have that permit in hand, we can kind of evaluate what they're, A, what they're doing and B, how we're gonna make this factor into the three acre rule. Okay, so next, you know, I like to start our conversation to learn the community's concerns. I list these questions out here as kind of a starting point and we can kind of build from here. So I can, I'll go, you know, start each concern. We can ask these two questions and kind of build from here. So for the three-acre rule, what are the public's stormwater concerns on site? What, you know, what is, are there any concerns that really kind of keep you up at night or is there anything that we should know about that we can't readily say?
Not that I'm aware of. Diddle.
The only thing that I've, that's been brought to my attention, Andrew, was the wash, the stuff that gets washed into the road from the salt and sand pile area, our stores there. And then.
Yep.
There's a discharge that runs on the easternmost driveway of the highway garage. So it comes down their driveway, picks up, collects a bunch of sediment, goes under the road and discharges onto Haddock's property before it hits the brook. And it's washed that out and it's, it started undermining the road a little bit. So that's, that's something that, that we definitely are, will be looking at from MRGP's standpoint as well.
Yeah. Yeah, is it, I, I know there's a culvert like right around here. Is that what you're talking about or is it the one further in here? There's a couple.
Oh, yeah, I can't really see here.
Sorry. So there's one directly across from the transfer, couple across from the transfer.
It's further down.
It's, it's to the east. See the two buildings there?
Yep.
It is the driveway where it comes out, comes out right there, yep.
Yep, yep, yep. We, yeah, Joe and I saw that when we walked the site, so it's, it's definitely on our mind.
And then the other thing was right up to the, to the west side of the transfer station's exit drive.
Yeah.
The water's pooling there and it's created cattails and we've, I've heard a couple people say that's wetlands now because it's cattails there. Which isn't always true.
I will defer to Evan, Evan and Joe on that. Those are our weather experts, but I think you're, you're okay for right now.
Yeah.
Mike, Mike, you're talking about the area that's within the ditch. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yep. A ditch is not a jurisdictional wetland, so ditches often have cattails in them and they get cleaned out and there's no permitting needed to do that, so.
Thank you.
It's, it's okay.
Any other questions?
We have nobody on from the public.
No, I'm good.
We have nobody on from the public.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to talk about any anticipated future uses for the general site. I know the salt, you know, the salt and sand shed is kind of a different kettle of fish right now, I just wondered if there are any other general uses that folks were planning for the site.
We continue to mine the gravel from the gravel pit, which is gonna be now to the south of where the solar panels are, are gonna go. And, but I think our footprint for the, for the transfer station is pretty solid. Just so you, you guys are aware that the old town landfill is to the, to the east where the salt and sand pile are, so that's been capped. So that's, but it's there, so it's really kind of limited use.
You're talking right here? All right, so then we can kind of move on to the salt and sand shed. So you already addressed one of the concerns that you had, was the washout of salt and sand onto the road and then, you know, into the environment. Are there any other concerns, you know, general size, you know, people complaining of noise or dust or anything like that?
Not that I'm, not that I've received. Okay.
I'm not aware of any.
No. Everybody in the room is kind of saying, not that, not that they're aware of.
Okay, cool. And then, so do you, for this future sand shed, are there, you know, in some anticipated future requirements that you folks might have? You want it bigger, smaller, any, have you kind of had a thought process on what you want, what you want?
Well, right now, it's not, the sand's not covered, so the goal was to put in a combination salt and sand shed, that we would move all of our salt there instead of storing it off-site, and, and the sand, and have it covered so that we're not taking big lumps of icy sand and, so, but, and it also takes it away from that road where it's gonna get washed into the, possibly into the Pond Hill Brook.
Yes. Okay, so basically, in, and so, you know, the area that you, that you folks are using, is that kind of representative of what, how much you'd store, or would you, if you had it covered, would you look to use it a little bit less? I'm just, you know, or is that about, because we have the salt shed and then this kind of bigger stockpile here, is that basically the same amount of area you wanna use?
The, the sand is, well, is our usual yearly or annual amount, but the salt is way under, that's just a little small shed, the rest of it's stored off-site.
Okay, so the right, okay, gotcha. Okay, does anyone, do you have any other concern about the salt and sand shed or anything? I know, so I know, based on our previous conversation, you kind of had an idea or a desire to have it kind of placed kind of between the transfer station and the town pole line, kind of up in this area, is that kind of what you're still thinking?
That's what I'm thinking, and the board, that's originally, that was the concept. We did, we did some exploration in there to see if we were gonna hit groundwater, and we, we didn't. The gravel's not really good gravel, so we started removing some of this, the material out of there. We cut trees out of there, started moving some of the material, but that is the area, and.
Okay, so, yeah, just wanna make sure, you know, it was a little bit since we last talked, so I wanna make sure that we're still kind of high in this area as a replacement area. Okay, so as far as, you know, our next concern is kind of the MRGP compliance, so we can kind of come back and look at kind of the evaluation that was done around the surrounding areas. So, this area over here is kind of out of our scope, but as far as this, you know, we have these two sections that need to be brought into compliance that we could definitely make as, you know, part of the, part of our management plan, but I just wanna make, you know, see if there's any updates on that side, if you guys had done any work already this summer or anything like that.
Nothing in that area.
Okay. All right. All right, so that's, that is what I have for kind of starting topics and topics of discussion. Is there anything, while, you know, Evan, Joe, Jay, if you guys wanna bring up anything else, any other concerns, or any of the board members want to, this is kind of the time and place for it.
Any questions, gentlemen?
I'm good.
Joe, Bob?
I'm good.
Guess we're all good.
I have a question for the board, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Would the town want to keep a public access point where, like, near where it currently is for, for the sand? Because that's where we, that little building you can see right there, that's where the public's sand is stored. I'm assuming that you guys would want to have something still that the public can get to it.
Sure.
So we had to consider that, Andrew.
Okay.
Anything else?
You would like it very close to the, you know, obviously, it wouldn't, it would be a little bit infeasible to have them come up and into this hill, get their stuff, you wanna keep it in basically this area?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, there are no other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Tim Gilbert, Rutland County Solid Waste District update.
Good evening. I didn't like it.
Jim, maybe Jim, I emailed it to you guys, that's what I did.
Did you print any out for?
I didn't, oh, I forgot, to be honest, I apologize.
Because I read your report, but I don't have it memorized, obviously.
I can go make up another one.
I could take Jim's, who was past that pile on an old script.
You all set? You got yours?
I have two.
Dexter?
I was trying to get it apart, it just wasn't cooperating.
Mike, did you get one?
I do, thank you. If you have one, you can throw it or pack it.
Will be in a minute.
Mr. Chairman, do you want us to ask questions?
I was gonna ask Tim if he had anything more he wanted to say, and then, any questions?
Basically, we're kind of trying to crawl out of the COVID thing here by increasing services. One of the things that I think Mike spoke to me about was the harmful hazardous waste needing an appointment, and that was an irrationally many people, and that was a result of the COVID issue. We have opened it up, the board elected to open it up three days a week without appointment over six days a week, wanting to make a budget to drop off, awful hazardous waste. Our revenues have been a bit higher than anticipated. Our budget, our revenue's around maybe a hundred thousand dollars over budget at this point, and we're on a year-to-year basis, January to January. I have a booklet from the district which will help distribute here in a moment. I did give it to Bob earlier, John, Sam, so I have taken on the book list, has the information about budgets and all that stuff in it. Currently, I've been talking with our manager to increase the ease of getting permits for the Rutland County Solid Waste District Transfer Station, which we operate at least, and I've spoken to Mike about it. As it stands, anyone that holds a valid Gasoline Transportation permit can get a Rutland County Solid Waste District permit for nothing, and they only need to call over there to get one mail to them, with the available information on their permit, number of the gas with them, or they can do it online and one will be emailed to them. I talked a little bit with Mike and Mark, our manager, about somehow making that automatic when people get their permit, they could just request to get the one from Rutland County Solid Waste District also. A little bit more convenient for people in that it's open six days a week, from seven AM to three. So, we're working on that. Other issues, I think I put my report, are the more for the materials recycling facility for Alzheimer's at the Byton Plant, for district ones that, that'll be, get out in September. We've got a lease agreement of dollars to, which will connect the district about sixty thousand dollars a year for that building, for the portion that they're using, and offices are also in there. We have recently put in a new scale for the transfer station in the last couple of years, and we're also, right now, surprise, surprise, one of those thousand properties in the state has identified that needs a wastewater, stormwater runoff permit, and that we have more than three acres of impervious material, and we did look at the possibility of reducing that amount, however, it's not, not going to work for us. So we're now, we have an engineer, I should do, studying it, and we're working with the state, and wanna try and get them all together, and if there's some back and forth right now around here, it'll be, sort of changing the requirements as time goes on, so we're gonna try and get that together. It looks like it'll be expensive. We have a new town, did come into the district with this deal, they voted last to tell me to join the district, and we just have you all are putting an application. Sam, you say you're operating a slight value law, has put an application for Holland, and I, I know it's come through. Basically, I think this is.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Questions, Joe?
No questions.
Did you get your questions answered?
I'll go right around, I'll go right around. You're next.
No, I'm good.
You're good. No questions, Dick. Bob?
No, I haven't got my questions answered, just got this book handed to me at five o'clock. Can you at least tell me what page that is on, Tim? The total dollars collected for 2020 and district surcharge money? Yeah, no. I've been asking for nine months, Tim. I still haven't got an answer.
Go through the book.
Well, I haven't had the book for nine months, but I shouldn't have to go through the book to get the answer.
Oh, yeah, you know, I would, anyone would have.
It's a, it's a, just one financial question, Tim. The district manager should be able to answer it off the top of his head. Do you know what page it's on, Mike?
I don't, I haven't even seen the book, so.
Okay.
The number I gave you, you didn't like, so.
Well, it wasn't the what, it wasn't the answer.
That's all I can do.
Yeah.
It's Exhibit D on page ninety-four, Bob.
Page ninety-four, Tim? What does it say for total surcharges collected?
It's all right there.
Not just waste dollars, the total collected? District surcharges? See if you can find one.
You can add one. The transfer station pays eight hundred and eight thousand dollars, surcharge is waste dollars, seven hundred and ninety-seven.
Like one point five million, is that what you guys collected in district surcharges?
Whatever that adds up to. So revenues were one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars budgeted, the actual expenses were, our actual revenue I guess was two hundred and sixty thousand nine eighty-six, and seventy-one thousand.
So you guys, you guys collected twice as much as what you collected in 2019. 2019 was at like eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in district surcharges, so you collected one point five million in 2020? So you've doubled, you've doubled.
I don't see what it was in nineteen.
Well, that's what it was, I can tell you.
It's whatever it is.
Other questions, Bob? Other questions?
I have one other one, yeah. Has there been any discussion or plans to discuss that lowering the district surcharge, Tim?
There's not been a.
Well, I'm not finished with the question, there's more to it. Money collected, that one of the, since one of the two properties will be finally paid off, liability, the district will greatly be reduced in revenues and increasing by the tenant paying rent. Do you guys think you really should be still charging nineteen ninety-seven per ton for the surcharge?
The board hasn't discussed that yet, and that, those things actually happen, but what I've done in the past is to move that the board return surplus to the towns, and I believe Gasoline got back about fifteen thousand dollars or something, roughly, and I am watching that right now, the little unknown areas, how much this wastewater is gonna cost us to mitigate. However, I would say that your representative is not in favor of just letting that money sit there, and I would like to return it to the towns, and I usually get fairly good support from most, not all towns. Most representatives are supportive of returning that money to the towns, some are hesitant with the unknown, because we're dealing with unknown amount of trash, we're kind of guessing what it is. The recycle market is a roller coaster, you don't know what your revenues are, so they're hesitant to just lay it out there and cut back. Right now, our district is about the lowest trash district in the state, or is typically peaceful, or, or surcharge free, I should say.
So is that a yes, or is that a no to having discussions at lowering it?
I said they haven't had a discussion on it yet.
They haven't, but are, do you think they will?
We've had a discussion about not raising it, that's for sure. Last we met, the board was not in favor of that at all, as we're coming into, because we're coming into COVID with concerns about reduced amounts, reduced revenue, and so on, but the board felt that maybe you should just reduce your expenses rather than increase your costs, and I think we're probably pretty fast on that. We have not had a full board meeting since, I mean, June, we don't typically have one in July and August. The executive board has been meeting, our main focus of the executive board has been to update the policy manual, and I anticipate we'll have a full meeting in September.
Are you guys, are the meetings open to the general public, or is it all by Zoom?
Open to the general public by Zoom, yeah.
Just by Zoom? We can't attend, we can't attend in person?
There's no meeting like this so far. We are, I've been advocating for this type of meeting, our chair is in favor of that, and we're going to work on that from September, but I guess we didn't have anything in July and August, so we'll see, we'll see what the numbers are for COVID and state recommendations that are in September.
Okay, okay, Bob?
It's been annoying a little bit, but maybe personally.
Mike, you have any questions for Tim, or?
Just for the record, because I don't, I don't recall, but I think I know the answer. When's the last time the district raised the surcharge rate?
I would say it was probably about two years ago, about two dollars, or maybe three years ago, and it hadn't been raised for many years prior to that.
I did see that in the book, that's in the book.
Isn't it in there?
Yeah, it's in there. Anything else, Mike?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Tim, we appreciate it.
I'll leave you with the book.
Yep.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Tim.
Yeah.
Just do it. I'll hear.
Don't get asleep, huh?
You already got yours, Bob?
No.
Yeah. Mike needs one, hopefully Mike can get one.
Also, Bob, you usually ask me about the fees at the transfer station for members and non-members, and we list those things there.
Yeah, this is good.
I'm anticipating that, if you didn't have it.
Go.
That's something that you recommend we post on our site, if you want to use that place?
I think that would be a good idea. I don't know how to compare with our.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, the board has been a little bit, more than a little bit, in requiring a permit, increasing fees for non-committed users of our transportation, and increasing fees for people from non-member towns. And that has been going very well.
If I sent a message to Mark, would he be able to send me one of those books?
Hello?
Yeah, so I have it on file there.
I.
You're not getting mine?
No, I'll get, I'll get.
You're giving one of yours.
I'll get it from Mark.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I asked him, he said he, I thought he emailed it over, but I said, oh.
Not that I'm aware of.
I can certainly get some and drop them off to you.
If you were thinking about.
I just wanted one, just have it on file here.
Yeah, I'll make sure that gets to you.
All right, thank you.
Did I hear a discussion about putting this on our, a link to this on our website?
That thing, the.
Your charges. Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for your time, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen.
You too.
Thanks, Tim.
Next item is tax stabilization policy review and proposed revisions for signing. And the reason for this, Mike, is?
Well, the simple, the simple answer is we, we can't find here a copy of the signed version. All we found is the draft, and we, we found it in two different locations. Karen did ask Jim if he had a copy of the signed one. He, he doesn't have one either, so we technically don't have anything that's, that to give out, that says, that doesn't say draft on it, and it's been signed. So I'm, I'm not sure if I'm really looking for some, an answer tonight, was here's the provided, saying here's the draft. Is it something you guys want to be able to take a look at at some point, review? Or if you know that's what it was, then, then we could apply signatures to it. But right now, we have nothing to, to go on that's been signed.
Good. I don't see any substantial changes. I mean, I think you basically said that this was the document that basically was approved by the voters?
Yeah, then, all I can find.
Oh, you can find on it, okay.
There's nothing that's, doesn't say draft, and there's nothing that's signed.
Okay.
Have you looked this over, Mike? Is it, do you have any problems with this?
I, I wasn't here when you guys did that, so I, I don't have a frame of reference for it. Jim was, I'm taking kind of your lead, Jim, because you were part of that. If, if that looks like what, what you guys put to the voter, put for, before the voters.
Trying to remember, wasn't I on the board when we?
The minutes don't say much at all, really, about.
How many years ago did we do this? I remember.
Before my time.
I remember putting it in front of the voters, and the voters approved it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I.
You remember it, Bob, or?
I don't, what, what it was, no.
All right.
No.
I mean, if, if the board agrees with the content, we looked at the minutes, it just doesn't have the content of what was in there. I can get the date, but, but as far as knowing exactly what was in that content, I don't, I don't, I can't find it.
Anyone have any problems with it?
I don't think so. I look at it pretty good.
I don't have any problems. I, I was going to ask, are these rates on page two comparable to what other Vermont towns are doing these days?
I think they are. I believe they are, yeah.
If I recall right, that was, came right out of BLCT's recommendations.
Yeah.
I think, didn't it?
I wish I could help you on that.
I'm, I'm pretty confident that the three of us were on the board when that was.
Yeah.
But I don't recall any details of the discussion. I do remember that we had to get permission from the voters to do this.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Because in the past, prior to that, every time someone wanted tax stabilization for a new business, it had to be presented to the voters on town meeting day, which was somewhat cumbersome.
Absolutely.
Is this, is there something you guys want me to go and look up that's on here, like the rates or assessed value percentages, or where I, I'll certainly can do that.
Well, Jim seems to remember that those are comparable to what other towns are doing. I don't know if there's any need for you to do that.
So this was. If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we formally adopt the existing town of Castleton, Vermont tax stabilization policy.
And second?
And second? Discussion, more discussion?
Just a, if we adopted this by presenting it to the voters of the town, maybe instead of the word adopt, we might say reaffirm?
Okay, I was attempting to do that by saying existing, but certainly we, I'll modify my motion to say that we reaffirm and certify, maybe is the right word? Or approve, reaffirm and approve the tax stabilization policy that was presented to the voters in the past. Does that make sense? I'm trying to make sure we get this right.
Yeah, do we know when the voters?
We found in the minutes, so I can go back to the minutes and, and fill it in there. That's the only way I can do it. I don't have a.
Instead of presented to, approved by the voters on.
Yeah.
Whatever the date was, in March, you know?
If you can add that in, that would be acceptable.
Second.
And a second. Okay, all those in favor with the addition, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. There you go, Dick.
Oh, we got to sign it?
Yeah.
Can I, Dick, was Dick and who seconded that?
I made the motion.
I did. Joe did.
Hopefully Deliza can make sense out of the Zoom recording.
Well, I'm trying to keep, because if that doesn't work.
Well, we don't have the audio recorder either, right? Because that's with Deliza.
I don't know where she is. I know she's been busy with the rec stuff, so.
Be out of character for it to not, just not show up, so something's going on.
Moving, moving on to the winner of sand bid award. This, I don't think should be too complicated.
Can I make it real simple? I'm going to make a motion that we award the bid quote number one, the 3,000 cubic yards delivered to Martel Trucking at 1750 per yard for a total of $52,500.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Other than maybe should you put delivered in that? I know.
I didn't say delivered.
I heard you said delivered.
Okay. I didn't hear that.
Well, just in case, I will make sure that I mean that to be the delivered price.
And that is under the budgeted amount, and it's the same person that we got last year, and it was, what they provided to us last year was quality, it was not clay and.
That was going to be one of my questions. It meets our specs, right?
It does.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Crack ceiling bid award. Mike?
On this one, Karen solicited, so both sand and the crack ceiling was sent out to all the normal vendors that we send it to. And like I saw with the sand, we got one back. And the same with the crack ceiling. The, the price that they quoted was the same as last year, $4,150 a day for the crack ceiling from Nikon. And they did, they did a decent job, so I wouldn't have any issues with recommending them again.
Is there a motion?
How many days?
It's five days, so it's eight hour day for five days.
Oh, that, that's my question. How many, just projected a five days?
Five days, yeah.
And they'll be done?
Correct.
Okay.
They were to do it last year in four days, so.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion, we accept Nikon for the crack ceiling, bid price of $4,150, $50 per day, for eight hour day.
Second?
And a second. Discussion.
Just though it's formally in the minutes, we're anticipating a five day.
That should be in there.
Contract.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, hearing none other. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Signing of the tax warrant, which is an official duty, rather weighty document here.
Imagine what it's like for Burden.
They need a bigger folder than we do. I'll take a stab at this. I make a motion that we approve and sign of warrant to the tax collector of the town of Castleton and the county of Rutland.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion.
Well, what, what exactly is this giving those permission?
It's giving the, it's, it's a warrant authorizing the tax collector to collect taxes on the town's behalf. It's an official duty we have to do every year.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We've done this every year.
Well, your name's not on here. How do we know you're the official tax collector, Mike? You know?
Because you appointed me.
Oh, okay, okay. Have we reappointed you? We do it at the beginning of the year?
No, it just hasn't, there's been no, I haven't had a break in service, so.
Okay, okay.
It's one of those inherent jobs that come with, like, road commissioners inherit with the town manager in Vermont.
Yeah.
Like Margaret is the secretary to the tax collector.
You get another uniform for that, Mike, other than your fluorescent vest for road commissioner?
Just another mug, I think.
She does most of the work, but he gets all the headaches.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Did we have a motion on that?
We did.
We did. We have a second?
We do.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
I didn't get the who seconded it.
I did.
Thank you.
Hopefully I made the motion correctly, but.
Yeah.
I know auditors sometimes are really fussy about stuff like that.
Oh, yes.
It's not going to stop the money from coming in.
That's what I was going to say.
It's going to get collected.
With or without permission.
We got to pay the bills, so.
We're a little behind, ain't we?
We're catching up.
Yeah.
We're working at it.
There's no rush to see the Red Sox lose.
We're okay tonight, we're not going to lose.
You're not playing.
You got it.
What a cop out.
Tax map contract, I had it earlier today.
Okay, the next item is something that was carried over from previous meeting, tax map contract, Franco Rossi purchased business, which is with whom we contracted. This was something we asked Mike to investigate, and your investigation concluded what?
While you were in the room, Jim, I made sure of that. So the, the question that Joe brought up last time about that $15 per parcel or adding a draw, a sketch, it's, it's an option, it's not, it, you don't get charged automatically, we'd have to ask for that to be, be charged. And it, all it does is adds, there's layers that can be added to, and this is just one piece of it, there's more layers that can be added to these tax maps to provide greater information or fidelity about abutters and, there's, there's layers and layers. And so the more you want to pay, the more layers you can get. But I talked to Mary Jo, I had Jim in there, and it's just an option, it, we don't automatically get charged, and we have no plans on asking for it, because it's rather expensive. It's, and I talked to Jonas and to Mary Jo and said, if you would like that, to approach the select board about these layers and what you would think would be important for the future use for zoning or for assessing, and you should come before the select board. And they may do that at some point, but right now, there is no plan to ask for those, and there is no charge, no automatic charge for it.
Question for, any questions for Mike? None? Good, we're all good? Is there a motion then to accept the contract?
I would move that we approve the contract for tax map maintenance submitted by Franco Rossi for services at the cost of $3,500.
Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Oh, a short one now. Managers report.
It's only eight pages long, Mike. It's only eight pages long.
I know, I cut a lot of it out.
Isn't that what you said, Jim?
Everybody have to sign this, Mike, or?
Which one is that? The tax, no, just.
No, okay.
We'll put the motion with it, so. For the minutes.
Any questions for Mike on the managers' report?
You want to do it that way, Jim?
I'm going to try, Bob.
Okay.
I won't get anywhere. I won't get anywhere, but I'll try. If not, at this point, Mike, do you have the items that you need action on?
Yeah, they're highlighted in yellow. It's on page one. Obviously, we can go pack the tap grant, we already talked about that one. The bike and ped grant, we did have a kickoff meeting for that, that's that project that the town had, I mean, the select board had approved for sidewalks from Castle and Corners to Parsons Hill. And so we were awarded that grant, that's a 50% match. I, I'm waiting for the final document, the grant document, and a contact, or a call from the project manager, was Pete Pochop, to get that thing moving. But the, the good news is, I guess we were awarded the grant.
Page four?
Let's, let's stop at page one. Okay. What, that very first one, Mike, just refresh my memory, what, what is being proposed under that grant? Is that the sidewalks and stuff?
The pedestrian accessibility one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's from the university to Main Street, and then, when it's, once it hits Main Street, it goes east and west. It goes west to Sand Hill Road. If you remember, John Rayland came in at that meeting and recommended that it not only go east, but it go west, because of the students that walk in the road there. So the board had approved that, and it goes east to the rail trail or the Amtrak station. This was just a scoping study to talk about, or investigate where there may be problems with accessibility, safety, and then it can, it'll be a public meeting, and just where Pete Pochop beat us up a little bit about making sure that we warn these, Btrans wants them warned two weeks out. So the one tonight wasn't warned in plenty of time, in their two week period, but, so we had to warn them two weeks out, but this is where the public come in and talk about safety, sidewalks, mud trails, broken ankles, whatever. That's what it's about, Bob.
So it's sidewalks, but not crosswalks?
No, it's sidewalks, crosswalks, bike paths, lighting, it's all of it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
This will have to be warned by mid-September, right?
Yeah, once, then, yeah, by middle of September, because the 27th is the meeting date that they want to have.
You're clear on the methodology they require for warning?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, you need a motion on this?
No, just kind of informational.
Well, wait a minute, okay, Joe?
Well, I was just going to ask a question about 1B. You do, do need a motion on 1B.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, because there's a form in there. I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, sorry, my apologies.
This is a nitpicking, but there's a hundred dollar difference between the amount you've cited and the amount that Mr. Kaplan has cited.
Was it 92.5? Okay. I doubt it was 92,400, to be quite honest with you, so if you, I'd go with the 92.5. But the, there's a form in there to sign, in the, is there, in the blue folder?
Well, if you divide it 185.2, you get 92.5. It's a 50% match.
Perfect.
Well, the.
Good catch.
Form I have here is Castleton, Four Corners to Parsons Hill?
Yes, the one.
That's the one. Okay, all right, okay.
So, if you, if you make a motion to accept it, that, that, that grant for that ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars, that will get us on our way.
Okay. Would somebody care to make a motion?
I would move that we accept the V-Trans Small Scale Bicycle and Pedestrian Program grant of ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Sorry. Their grant was for ninety-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Which requires a one-for-one match by the town.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
The second. Discussion. Where all the money comes from, Mike?
We have the money in two different funds for the sidewalk project that's going on now, and that. So, it's, we have it in the bank.
Okay.
So, Mike, I, I apologize. I, you did not get that number wrong. That was the number, that is in Kaplan's letter.
Okay. I just stubby-penciled or fat-fingered it down on the bottom, then?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Continue, Mike.
Page two.
Mike, for the record, Mike Holden recused himself.
Oh, okay.
Interested property owner.
Does that mean you're going to be protesting?
It's going to be another day.
No actions needed on that. Transfer station, just an update on page two, transfer station. No, nothing's needed, just to let you know that we're working our butts off to make sure that we keep all the appropriate signs and everything else out there for, for E-cycles. Joe is working with, with Bob Ward to take one of our old bins and just shore it up a little bit because it's, it's kind of old. Put it down on the pad on the lower portion of the transfer station, because we can take six Gaylords or pallets, one Gaylord and a pallet of E-cycle material, but the bin that we currently have can only take four. So, when we're full, we've been turning people away right now, so we, we need the extra space and we're, we'll get up to our permit number of six. So, we're working just internally to get that done, just so you're aware of it. We actually make money on that.
Did we, is he getting, uh, did Bobby give him an idea to get bins from somewhere?
Yep, yep. He, he sent me a message, so. We'll, we'll be soliciting those bids, quotes for bins, for a bin. Any questions on page two? It's not in here, but the solar project, I did talk to Tom Hand. Went up there today. We still have a little bit more to fill in. The hole that we dug to get the good gravel out, but the guys are up on North Road digging out ditches and stuff, and they're putting stuff in there today, so we should have it filled up there by the end of the week.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
You may not want to answer this in open session. Why would Jethro and Pete Dorn remove twelve-hundred cubic yards for no charge? Why would they use their equipment and trucking and not get paid for any of that?
It didn't cost the town any money. The solar company paid to get that removed and staged.
They paid Jethro and, okay, okay.
We, yes. We, we paid it, then they paid us.
Just the way I read that, it just sounds like they did it for nothing.
No.
Okay.
No, but the good, the good news is, it's, it's eleven feet away from where the fence will be, so that in the future, if we need to excavate around it, we got plenty of room to do so, to reach good gravel, and it's been staged down at the east end of the pit. So, when we go to crush again, it's already there, and we didn't even pay for it.
That was my other question, where they staged all that, so.
Yeah, set the east end down.
Okay.
Right where it was this year.
Sure.
Any questions? No questions on page two, three, three, page three. Let's go past that one. Anybody have any questions on page three? On page four, sewer plant. It's, I wrote in, there's nothing, no action needed or whatever, just explain, self-explain, I'm sorry. I tried to explain what was going on with the sludge tank. If you have any questions, we can, whenever, talk about it. But we're trying to get this stuff drawn down. Rutland shut down for a while for some upgrades. So, it got above that hole, but the plug held, and as it gets higher, it's all decanted, or it's water mostly at that point. Jeff has been siphoning it off and running it back through the plant to keep that level down below, but it did get up above it because Rutland couldn't take anything, but they're back, we're back to a normal business now.
Can I just make a comment on this? The wastewater treatment facility, I'm all in favor of extending it down Preston Lane and up Crystal Heights with that American Recovery Act money.
I did get a visit this week from a person about that, Crystal Heights, asking, they know about that money. They asked if we, if the town had any plans of extending sewer up that, up Crystal Heights. And I told them more to follow. The board hasn't decided on what they, what they wanted to do yet. We did get paid two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, which is the half of the payments from the ARPA money for that first blast of, not, not the county money, but the Rutland money. So, we did get that today. So, just so you're aware, it's.
What was the number again?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand.
There's another to come in a year.
Correct. Plus, when they figure out what they're going to do with the county money, there's going to be some money coming there. And I think you guys saw the ones that emailed. I did send a message to Brian Collmore, Bob Helm, and Rutland Regional Planning Commission, asking them if they had received any more information on what this stuff could be used for. Gave some examples, and basically, there's no answer yet.
At this point, we're still limited to broadband water or?
Sewer.
Okay, Mike, continue.
On the bottom of page four, it bleeds over into page five. So, the, I did send a letter to Castle University based, and I just did this on Thursday, about the EUs, about trying to see if I can squeeze anything more out of them. But the budget did, the budget did reflect two-hundred-and-forty EUs, which was that median, or, or average since two thousand and fourteen, so. Any questions on page four or five?
Is that, is that going to be the end of it, Mike, or are you still going to negotiate with them?
Well, I haven't got, I haven't got a response back yet, so as soon as I get a response, I can go from there.
Okay.
All the rest of these things, all these FEMA projects, I got some crappy news on, last week from Josh Cavahal. That damn culvert that runs underneath the trestle on South Street, that's now going to become this monumental project. It's, if we use a concrete box culvert, it has to be five feet wide, six feet tall, or no, six feet wide, five feet tall, and has to extend more out at the exit end. And this is just getting really complicated, and the, the money that FEMA gave us, the federal share was twenty-nine thousand dollars, with the state share brings up to thirty-nine thousand. There's no way that we're going to touch making those repairs for that much money. So, I've been talking with the V-Trans, and it's, it's in here about the trestle, about trying to apply for a better resilient, building resilient infrastructure in communities grant, a brick grant, or a structures grant to try to help this out. But Josh Cavahal sent me a message saying he's still waiting from Fisheries to talk about the aquatic organism passage, and it seems like that's probably going to happen, have to happen. It just makes everything a little more expensive and a little bit more complex. So, more to follow on it, but just got, just bad news just kept getting worse next last week when it comes to some of these projects.
All right, Joe?
Mike, I assume that nobody, I mean, since, unless it happened in the last few hours, there hasn't even been an infrastructure bill passed yet, but is there any chance that, and the right infrastructure bill could put money towards this kind of project? I mean, if the theme is build back better, it would seem that this should qualify, but I don't know. I, I agree with you. It sounds like it's going to cost a fortune.
I, I think that, that's absolutely right. But what's going to happen, I think the money's going to come trickling into the state with this, and they're going to, they're going to plus up their structures grant and their brick grants. That's what I'm being led to believe, is the programs aren't going to change. They're just going to have better funding to give, give money to the towns to support that. So, a structures grant may not do it, but the brick grant probably will. And so, it's just waiting to, I don't want to, I don't want to stop the process. I want to start working toward the application for the grants. You can always put a pause button on it until we know more, but as FEMA said, that culvert didn't rot from the storm. That's been rotting for years, and the concrete's become so fragile, it just breaks apart. So, it wasn't due to the storm, so they're not going to mitigate it and give us more money because of it. They said that, that would be up to the town, so. Did I answer your question, Joe?
Yeah.
And I think the rest of it.
We've done.
On page eight, on page six, there's no questions on six. On page seven, eleven B, the Lighthouse Marine LLC completed their weed harvesting, pulling at Crystal Beach and pulled a bunch of crap out of the mouth of Sucker Brook. He said there wasn't as much there right in the, in that mouth than there was when we first looked at it. So, he thinks that high waters have washed some of it out farther, but it's not sitting right where it was, it was poking above the water. But that's completed. The park and ride, this was done by a grant, and I just talked to Ed today by email. He has a folder up there that, we have to climb up there and I guess check these, these units on, on the, on the solar lights of the park and ride, so we can fix them. And if they test, if they test bad, then they're under warranty. We'll get them, they'll get them replaced for free. If it's not those, and it's just the batteries, the batteries are on us to purchase, and they're like a hundred and ninety bucks apiece. I forgot how many we needed, but. And Dan Gray wanted nothing to do with it, so we got to find somebody to, to do the work. But I got complaints about it, so I just wanted to follow up on it. But barring any of your questions, I'd be completed, and I would, if you asked that question about executive session, I need two personnel contracts.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Quick thing, under section fourteen. That person, their latest email was a little bit, I don't know what the right word is, but they seemed upset that they weren't provided with the name of the developer for the, for the senior living facility. So, is it, is there some reason why we didn't give them that information?
I replied to them. I gave them the name. I gave them Zach Hale's name. Jonas replied back to her because she was, her, her, her message back to Jonas was pretty curt. And Jonas replied to her and gave her the information that she was looking for.
Okay, maybe I missed that last part, or I didn't see that last part in the email string.
Yeah, no, he, he did provide it.
This all started with somebody emailing me that they wanted to know who the developer was and who the ADA?
ADA coordinator is.
ADA coordinator for the town is, and we don't have one because we're not, we don't have fifty employees.
Thanks for number thirteen, Mike.
What's that?
Said, "Thank you for number thirteen."
Yes, thank you, Mike, for number thirteen.
Thank you, Mike.
My pleasure.
So anyways, yes.
I got my wife to do it. I did, I did a lot of the homework. She did the work.
Has gotten the information that they requested?
I read the email, and when he explained exactly, the only thing he did put in there was that we had less than fifty employees, but I, I replied to Jonas, and even if I add in seasonal part-time help, we don't have fifty.
So, yeah, I'm not quite sure what their whole thing is here, but.
Time will, time will tell.
I didn't see any reason for us to not let them know who the developer is.
We have to.
Sure, of course we do.
Public records.
Yeah.
Can, can you speak to that? Why is the for-sale sign still up there? Can you speak to that in an open session, or would you rather not?
No, just we, we haven't really sold the property yet, so it's still, we haven't pulled it. If it doesn't go through, then I got to go back and put it up. I'd rather entertain people asking me if it's for sale than go through that rigmarole. And, and that, once in a while, I do. Probably over the last couple of years, I probably had five or six people come in and ask me if it was for sale.
It is under contract, but it's not closed, Greg.
Right.
Any other questions for Mike?
No.
No? Okay, well, set. Okay, moving on to the purchase orders for approval. We have a few of them there.
Okay, I have a purchase order, or make a motion, we approve purchase order number. Why are we even, that's nowhere near above the town manager's purview.
Beats me.
We don't need to approve a twenty-seven-dollar purchase order, do we?
No idea.
That's a pretty.
Do you guys have purchase orders? I don't have any purchase orders.
I don't have any.
Maybe that's why.
They came with the original.
None of these are over the threshold.
No, I got them.
You have purchase orders?
Mm-hmm.
Where?
Now, there's a warrants.
Those are warrants.
Oh, here's, here's one that we will have to approve. This one's over the, I mean, there's one there for twenty-seven dollars for, to pay Mike back for the multi-bot, you know?
That's the one that I got.
All right, so here it is, the big one. For, make a motion, we approve purchase order number zero-four-seven-two-zero-five to Belton Construction LLC for payment on the phase-one sidewalk construction project for the sum of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and no cents.
I don't have that one.
Nope, that is in the warrants. I didn't, this wasn't in my packet, but this one's over the threshold. It's in the warrants.
I brought it to her late on Thursday and said, hey, can you sneak this one in, that we get all, get all the parks out?
Is there a, did you, you made that motion?
I made the motion.
Was there a second?
There was.
There was. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
That's also included in warrant number zero-eight-zero-nine. I'll make the motion, we approve the following warrants. Zero-eight-zero-nine for a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents. Warrant zero-eight-zero-four for twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Warrant zero-eight-zero-six for five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Warrant zero-eight-zero-five for seven thousand, ten dollars and sixty-four cents. Warrant zero-seven-three-zero for thirty dollars. Warrant zero-seven-two-nine for nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. Warrant zero-seven-two-three for three hundred dollars and eighteen cents. And warrant zero-eight-zero-five-P for twenty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-four cents. And warrant zero-seven-two-nine-P for twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second? And a second. Discussion.
Before you call the question, I want to look at something here.
Go ahead.
I would, Mr. Parliamentarian, would it be appropriate for Mr. Holden to recuse himself from just one of that list, warrant zero-eight-zero-four?
Yeah, it, as we've sometimes done in the past, probably if you would rescind, if you would
Okay.
change your motion to.
I'm going to amend my motion to rescind.
Zero-eight-zero-four.
To rescind warrant zero-eight-zero-four from my motion.
And I accept that change in your motion and.
Okay, now we're good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we're not good to go, though, because if you're going to do that, then shouldn't you step out of one of these warrants? Because you're getting reimbursed for both parts, right? Is it the same thing?
Yes, I did, yeah. You're absolutely right.
Oh, I missed that.
I don't know which one it is in, but I saw it on there. If you're going to do one, you need to do the other.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I agree.
Yep.
It's there someplace, Joe. I don't know. I was going to ask you about that.
Know which one it is?
Yeah, I think it was a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars, right, Joe, yes?
I hope so.
Well, sixty-eight of that was for Belton, so.
No, it, there's, there, there definitely some reimbursements that I submitted to Melanie last week.
I just happened to see, oh, Joe Mark right there. It's on the.
So, is that on warrant number zero-eight-zero-nine?
Uh, yes, it is. Zero-eight-zero-nine.
So, I'm going to amend my motion to rescind warrant zero-eight-zero-nine as well. So, yeah, I don't think you can second that.
I can second that.
I'll second that one.
You, yeah, you can second it.
Okay, I think we're, I, I've got, I got track of this. I know what to do next.
Mike seconded it?
After you call the question, I know what to do.
Right. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. There you go.
So now, I have to make a motion to approve warrant number zero-eight-zero-nine for a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents.
I'll second that.
And a second.
I recuse myself.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Joe recuses himself. All those opposed, Joe recuses himself.
Then we have a warrant, uh, a motion for warrant zero-eight-zero-four for twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Excuse myself, Joe.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, guys, I was listening, what, who was the motion and second?
I made the motion and Joe seconded it.
Joe seconded it.
Yes, Mr. Holden recused himself.
Can I just make a comment about that?
Sure.
I don't, I don't totally agree with that. If Joe pays seventy-seven dollars for parts, he's get, just getting reimbursed, there's no financial gain from it. I don't think we should do that.
I would tend to agree with you.
But, to make it smoother, if you guys wanna do that?
I really doubt that anyone would ever complain that they're doing it for financial gain when they're actually just getting reimbursed for money they've already spent.
Yeah.
But...
Okay, we have two other warrants.
I move that we, uh, approve warrant zero-eight-zero-six P for seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and fifty-one cents and zero-seven-thirty P for seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and fifty-one cents.
One second.
And a second.
I recuse myself.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We should have eleven and all when it gets around to you.
Great. Bob, I actually...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I totally agree with your comment, by the way, just so you know. And I totally missed the one with Joe in there, I...
Yeah.
I didn't see yours in there, Mike.
It's in there.
It's the second one.
Yeah, but I didn't see, I saw Joe's.
I didn't want it, but I wasn't gonna worry about it.
Only ten more to go.
I'll tell you the story about the cable I bought from West Marine for the sunfish. I ordered six six-foot cables, uh, stainless steel, they sent me a quarter inch, thirty-six, one thirty-six foot cable...
Great.
Which I'm incapable of cutting cleanly. Uh, so I, you know, they gave me a hard time and I, but they agreed to take it back, and in the meantime, after I'd seen how big and inflexible a quarter-inch stainless steel cable is, I downgraded it to eighth inch, so, and I, I worked with these people, you know, on the phone, I said, you gotta put a note in the, in the order, because I screwed this up last time, six, six-foot quarter and, eight, eighth inch cables, um, they sent me one thirty-six foot eighth inch cable.
Oh, jeez.
Fortunately, Danny at R and D, uh, cut it for me.
Cut it for you?
Cut-off wheel will cut that.
Yeah.
I got one.
His, uh, I'm just impressed he didn't set himself on fire, because his shirt was full of sparks.
Yeah, shit cuts hard.
Stainless steel's a pain to cut.
Yeah.
You counting those, Mike?
So I'm, I'm supposed to sign some of these.
Oh, shit, I'm sorry.
You're not getting it to Joe.
I never gave them to Joe, shit, I need those all back.
Well, that's okay, uh, when they're all done...
As long as three of us sign them.
Need to make sure...
I wondered why it kept coming.
Yeah, I forgot.
We're getting there to you pretty quick there, so, oh, well.
Sorry, Joe, I gotta go that way.
No. And the one I, this one I signed.
You're not supposed to sign the big one, Joe.
Yeah, there's one, you'll have, you'll have an extra one you shouldn't sign.
This is the one I don't sign, all right, there's my name.
I think so.
I'm out, I don't have anymore. So the question, Mike, is do you have eleven when you get them all back to Joe?
I got eleven, sir.
You're good. Close enough for government work.
That's what this is.
You know, used to do some carpentry with an accountant, every time we banged a nail wrong, he, that was it, close enough for government work.
Okay, select board comments and/or concerns, Dick?
I'm good.
Bob?
Uh, are we gonna make a conscious effort to make the next meeting just warrants only, like we have for past years? Usually we take one meeting off in August of every year.
Would you like to do that?
I don't know, would you guys?
I'd be up for it.
I'd be up for it.
I know last year, that, that particular meeting, and I'm not blaming you, but I'm...
Yes, you are.
Well, kinda, it got loaded up with a whole bunch of other shit that I thought some of it was unnecessary, but let's just make a, make an effort not to have...
Yep.
Maybe we can get out of here in half hour, forty-five minutes or whatever.
Okay, that's, seems like a reasonable compromise.
Yeah, plus you have the twelfth.
Huh?
You have the meeting on the twelfth for the, uh, school board, uh, meeting.
That's this week, Thursday?
Thursday.
At what time?
Six PM.
Six?
At the fire station.
Okay.
And did I see that email said it was on the fifth?
Originally, yes. And then they did, they come back and say, oh, we can't do the fifth, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Which is good for me and you, so...
Anything else? Bob?
Uh-uh.
No? Joe?
Um, I may have overlooked something, but do we have a plan for our, uh, public meeting on ARPA ideas?
Uh, Jim said something to me about that, I said, if you, whenever you guys want one, uh, because if you don't do a meeting in the end of August, um, then you're gonna wait for your, you have to wait till September then, unless you do a special meeting.
Well, I think the more towns in the area have these open processes, uh, the more people will begin to wonder, what about Castleton?
Yeah, sure. Are you talking about the federal?
Yeah.
Money, yes, oh, okay, all right, okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about that one. Is the board gonna have something from, uh, for their long-range, short-range plans that help, will feed into maybe some of this?
We're hopefully having some suggestions from three other board members that will get to you, Mike.
If, if it comes to me separately, then I'll just roll it up, I guess, and send it back out to everybody.
Yeah, yeah. Would you, fellows, if you plan to submit something, try to get it, how's the end of the week, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, and, and if not, you know, just let Mike know.
I'll communicate with Mike, 'cause I...
Okay, that'd be fine.
Well, we, so we talk in September, probably, for the meeting, then?
Yeah.
'Cause I, I won't need it by the end of the week, Jim, i- if it takes some pressure off people.
Oh, okay, all right.
'Cause I need to warn it two weeks in advance, so if we back off from that first meeting in September...
Okay, fine.
And, you know, the September, I mean, you can publicize it earlier, uh, which takes the pressure off people who start to question, uh, but holding it later just means we may have more clarification on guidelines.
I think, um, Brian Collmore was on the local radio station this morning and said that there were no more guidelines that they had received as to disposition, what it could be used for, and so on.
He replied, I, I know you don't have email, Jim, but I did share that with the, I asked him, I shared it with the board members, that...
Yeah.
His reply was in there, that...
Sure, okay. Any other, any other comments, concerns? No, no, no? Okay, executive session?
Please.
You need one, huh?
Yeah, a couple.
Couple, okay. What's the first one?
Uh, for, um, personnel.
Okay.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel with the board and the town manager at eight-thirty-nine.
I'll second it.
Second. Okay, we're in executive session.